Welcome to the Village of Bartlett Committee of the Whole Meeting for May 17th, 2016. We follow the meeting to order and ask the Clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Erns?
Here.
Camer.
Here.
Carver Nero absent. Daney?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
President Wallace? Here. First item we have this evening on our Committee of the Whole Meeting is under Planning and Zoning Committee Chairman Ranky.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two items tonight. Hopefully I'll be able to read and pronounce them. First one is Blue Heron Business Park, the Elgin Beverage Site Plan Review. Very exciting stuff going on out in Blue Heron. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jim.
Thank you, Trustee Ranky. This is a auspicious occasion because this is the first development in the Blue Heron Business Park that is not in the pre-approved site plan, so you get to see it. And it is Elgin Beverage, and Randy Lindenberg is here representing FCL Builders on behalf of Elgin Beverage. They are proposing to build an 80,000 and some change square foot building on a 6.71 acre lot located just northeast of the not yet to be built Slade Drive and Route 25. Slade will be built later on this fall, since this is a fairly new business park. Basically, it's a warehouse, a building and distribution center for Elgin Beverage. They have a ability to expand this building if business is that great, and there's no reason to believe it won't be. Site plan will be access off of Slade as well as coming a right in, right out off of Route 25. It's a nice looking building. Here's the rendering and the building elevations. FCL builds a nice building. They've done that projects in Bartlett before, and they've got the landscape plan, and it is here with your approval to move on to the Plan Commission for the site plan review. If there are any questions, I'm sure Randy could answer them, or I'll try to.
I think it's an exciting prospect. Any questions?
I have a couple. Just...
Are you removing your entire operation from where you're at now?
My name is Randy Lindenberg.
The builder, right?
I'm the contractor only.
Do you know any about whether or not...
But they are moving their entire operation here.
Okay. I had a couple of questions if the petitioner was here about their Bergoff beer and stuff, of course. Very important, very important questions.
Especially under birthday.
Sure they'll bring it all with them.
Yeah. Yeah, it's exciting. I know I was just out at Blue Heron for the ribbon cutting for the, I guess...
ECP Traffic Control.
Yeah, the groundbreaking for the traffic control right across the street from you folks. So the only thing that we're going to try to do to get out there with all this going on is to market for people to eat.
Yes. That's coming.
That's a...
I have a question.
Okay.
Were you to go through this whole process, and I can't see any reason, big reason, why you wouldn't, can you tell me if you would be considering joining the Bartlett Chamber of Commerce?
Joining it? Certainly, we as the contractor would be happy to do so. We're obviously not residents here. I can't speak on behalf of Elgin Beverage themselves. I'm certain that they would consider it, and I'll be happy to advocate for that as well.
Okay. You will let them know that we did wonder.
I will gladly let them know.
Okay. Thanks.
You can let them know that you did a great job at handling that question.
Thank you very much.
Hidden you down on that one, so very good, very good. Not easy to stand at the podium. Any other questions or comments for...
Just one comment. I looked at the plans that you have here, and I just want to tell you personally, I think that this is a very constructive plan, looks excellent, and personally, I'm very proud to have you come to our village, and I thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, we're certainly proud to be associated with the project and certainly in the Village of Bartlett.
Do you think they'll be changing their name to Bartlett Beverage?
I was just going to ask that.
I actually spoke to the couple of the realtors that were putting the deals together, and they're like, "We've been Elgin Beverage forever, and really, it's going to stay Elgin."
Not even in HKA?
They're not going to rebrand, no. Not from my understanding.
Not even in HKA?
Well, maybe.
We can hyphenate. Okay, so if that's it, unless there's any objections, we'll move this matter along to the Plan Commission.
Sure.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Good luck.
If you're lonely, you could go sit over there. Oh, you're leaving? Fine. I know how it is.
Wait a second. Is that the groom's side or the bride's side? Because there's...
Hey, there's somebody that can answer a few of those questions. What kind of beers are around here? Now, we'll wait until we talk to the folks.
Okay, so the second item we have on Planning and Zoning tonight is the Exeter Site Plan and Parking Variation. And I know there's going to be lots of questions about this.
Thank you, Trustee Ranky. Exeter is a project that is in our Brewster Creek Business Park on Lot 9C1, which is really at the southwest corner of Munger and Brewster Creek Boulevard. This is site plan review, and there are variations for parking and loading docks in the setbacks. They are proposing to landbank 222 parking spaces. There is a 439 total needed, but they will do the landbanking. The Exeter Site Plan shows a nice building along, parallel to Brewster Creek Boulevard. The way that, because it's a dual frontage lot, the loading docks can't be located without having them on the front because they are, you know, facing Brewster Creek Boulevard. It's a very large building, 421,403 square feet, 47 exterior docks. It will be a precast panel building, beige in color, and I should probably flip to that sign. The rendering is a good looking building with nice entrances at each corner, curb cuts on Brewster Creek Boulevard. Again, the site plan identifies at 227 parking spaces. The zoning ordinance obviously requires more. They do not want to build all the parking at this time because they don't know their users. So they will do it, but they do want to landbank it. There's also 40 truck stalls on the north side of the building, and if you can see in the elevation, you can see the exterior docks on both the north and the south side and with the Munger roadside. You can see the, in this corner, they will put the, that's where their offices are going to be, right in that location, obviously, the truck docks. They are here, represented by the builder as well as the Exeter Company. They've looked at the Business Park for some time. We're excited to get them into the community, and they are excited to be here. And obviously, I missed one more. They do landscaping, and it will be landscaped in accordance with our landscape ordinance. So they are here if you have any questions. And again, the variances are for the parking in the loading docks and for the landbanking and parking spaces.
Jim, what is the parking situation out of Brewster Creek? I know we were having some problems out there.
We have had problems out there. We have addressed some of them. We used to have a pretty good problem with Get Fresh, which was a company that has been tremendously successful since they located. They were staging their loading and truck parking in the street as well as their employee parking in the street. We've worked with them, and they bought additional piece of property from the Business Park, and they built a separate parking lot. So now you see their trucks offsite. We still continue to have problems with the Rana Manufacturing Plant. They have numerous employees, and as you know, they are undergoing a renovation and an addition. They are currently, Brian's been working with them, building another offsite parking space to accommodate their employees. And obviously, when the construction's done, they'll go, that will go away. So those were the two big ones. Rana still has some issues with parking employees in the street. They are under construction with another offsite parking on property they own. So there's some tight spaces in the back.
And we don't know if this facility's going to have any impact on that at all because we don't know the user yet.
Right. They don't have their users yet, so that's why they feel that they can, they don't need all the parking right now, but they, obviously, if they got a user that would have a heavy employment, they would build those parking spaces. We've done landbanking before. We did it with Creative Works, which is the big candy company when it was the previous developer, previous owner. They never built it, and Creative Works has been able to keep all their employees onsite.
And what's the trigger for the landbank?
It's in the agreement, and I don't recall how we do it, but it's as needed when they get into a point, say if they were the two, they have two office spaces, if they had to cut it in third, I think that would be one of the things that would trigger it, the third office space.
Okay, but if we start having a parking problem, the village has the ability to say, "Hey, it's time to build out."
That's what we would put as a condition in the ordinance.
And it'd have to be pretty well defined as a parking problem.
It may or may not require a letter of credit, but there would certainly be landmark for that, and it'd be part of the ordinance that approves of their site plan and what other, whatever other zoning relief they need.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, I want to encourage, you know, building, but I'm very skeptical parking. It's one of the first things that everybody wants is a parking variance, and I'm very skeptical of this.
The two situations that Jim just described are really good problems to have. They're just a little bump in the road, and they've cooperated with the village in acquiring additional land for parking, and it's really exciting to hear that we have some successful businesses here.
Yeah.
The key will be the language, how we trigger the requirement to kick in. And as I say, it may be secured by a letter of credit, some kind of license that even we could go on the property if there was a situation arose. But at this point, until they know their users and their number of employees, it's a little difficult, and it could be overparked if it were, you know, built to the full extent of the requirement in the ordinance. With these large industrial buildings, a lot of it depends on the number of employees, so we can work with that.
What is the, what is the largest building we have out there? 421,000 square feet? I think we have one that's larger, or a couple that are larger. That's...
This will be the biggest one.
This will be the largest?
Creative Works is real close to it in size.
It's amazing, 421,000 square feet. Oh, excuse me, 403 square feet. That's just absolutely amazing.
That's a lot of square feet.
Yeah, I'd need a golf cart to get around that building.
Oh, you need a golf cart for a van.
As I recall, this building could be split into like four units, right?
Possible.
Yeah.
When they build these big buildings, they set it up that way so you can put the demising walls down the middle. Right now, they have two office space build outs anticipated, so...
Okay.
But it could be that way.
How big would the office space build outs be?
Building for?
I don't know what we have on the plan. I can't read that. I have to go here. The square footage for the office area is, is that 10,000 square foot? Yes. Well, that's a good sized office.
Yeah.
I don't believe it.
A lot of employees could be in there. Yeah.
How many employees?
They don't have users yet, so...
I'm sorry?
The Exeter people are here. If you want to come up here and...
How many employees? What's your estimate of the number of jobs created?
As we decide, my name's Jason D. Philippis. I'm with Exeter Property Group. Appreciate everyone's time. Happy birthday, Mayor.
Thank you.
Absolutely. It's really an unknown at this point, and when we come in and do the development, I don't think we would put 10,000 square feet of office in speculatively. It's really dependent on the user. I think what we'd like to see is to go in with a 3,000 square foot speculative office and then design that for the actual use. With respect to parking, and I completely respect and understand the village codes, I brought some brochures if anyone's interested in seeing, but we've identified three of the most competing buildings, I'd say. None of them are really local, but they range in size from 400,000 square feet to 588,000 square feet. We would have more landbank parking than those developments have existing today. So I think it speaks to the demand of users for that sized facility. Generally, you see about 200 parking spaces. We actually own the 1350 Munger site, which is the Creative Works site, and that building has 200 spaces and has worked well for them. Obviously, if there was a need for the tenant, that's our number one concern. It has to work for the tenant, otherwise it doesn't really work for us or the village, and we're happy to provide that parking when there is that need.
All right. Good to know.
Any other questions?
I just have a couple. Rana's construction probably be done by the end of this year, I'm thinking, right? The end of the summer, right?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, they're on track. Giovanni is coming formally, by the way. He's coming himself. But that's a problem right now, I know, because I went out there to look at it, and there's people all over the streets there. Is Get Fresh completely off the street? Now, I know I see their stuff in their parking lot, but there's still some street parking, I think, isn't there?
When I go by there, it looks pretty clear, and they have the trucks on that alternative parking spot.
Well, I could, yeah, my main concern is that we want to make sure that this gets cleaned up before your users start driving in and out of there. Because they start driving in and out of there and seeing a parking lot where they can't get trucks in and out, that's going to be problematic. So we need to make sure that we get the things cleaned up that we have right now that were causing the parking issues prior to your users coming in and saying, "Okay, I'll take 200,000 square feet," right? So...
Rana, as Brian has said, they're currently constructing their off-premise parking space to accommodate their employees, and then I think once the construction's done, it'll clear out that whole area there.
Okay. Good. That's beautiful. I mean, they're going to make it really nice, Rana's front.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Good. That's all I got.
Another question?
Question?
If by any chance you were, you know, the plan went through and you're built and you're all in, do you think Exeter would become a chamber member and support the rest of the business community in Bartlett?
I would definitely recommend it to the company, for sure.
By the way, she's Director of Membership.
Good. That's good to hear.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
So unless there's any objections, we'll move this along to the ZBA.
Yep.
Thank you.
And that's all we have for Planning and Zoning tonight.
Thank you, Chairman Ranky. Final item we have this evening, the Village Committee of the Whole Meeting is under Public Works Chairman Camer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we have the continuing part of when the business parks expand, we have to deal with their sewer and sanitary system. And so that's what we're talking about tonight with the sanitary sewer system draft ordinance. And with that, we're going to let Dan take that over and explain it to us a little bit more in detail.
Thank you, Trustee Camer. Yes, this is a revision to the sewer ordinance, mainly focusing at the pretreatment ordinance portion of it, which focuses on Brewster Creek, which is where our industrials are at. You may recall, over a year ago, we hired Trotter and Associates to do a local limits evaluation, where they came in and did sampling throughout our system and at our treatment plant to figure out what our treatment plant can actually handle, and then from there, we could set the limits. Deb Ness from Trotter and Associates is sitting next to Bob. She's here to be able to answer any questions you may have. From that limit evaluation, we have, and you'll see the chart, set the limits. One of the main issues that we've had over in our industrial park with some of the food industry is FOG or HEM, short for, it used to be called FOG, fats, oils and grease. And our limit was at 15 milligrams per liter, which was very low. Based on the evaluation, we were able to put it up at 100. So the industrial businesses will be able to discharge into our sanitary sewer up to 100 milligrams per liter without any penalty. The ordinance also includes a surcharge for four constituents, FOG being one of them, BOD is another, total suspended solids, and ammonia nitrogen is another. And what that says is, we, from the evaluation, we were able to come up with a domestic, kind of the normal sewer waste stream. Anything above that costs us more to treat that water. So we're going to put a surcharge on that customer for us to have to pay if they choose to exceed the limit that we set at the surcharge limit. So for instance, FOG is at 100. The absolute max limit is 400, so they, at no time can they exceed 400, otherwise they'll get a violation notice. But from 100 to 400, they can discharge it to into the sewer, and they'll come to our treatment plant. Our treatment plant can handle it and still meet the EPA permit, but they're going to pay for that because it costs us more to treat it. So that's essentially what we're setting up in this new sewer ordinance. That kind of summarizes what we're doing. I'd be available for any questions, and Deb is here as well.
I have a, I have a couple of questions I'd like to ask you. Are there any companies out there that are currently approaching these levels? I may have missed that earlier. I think you said it was, we were on 70?
We...
Is this in parts per million?
We have a couple of industry right now that struggle to meet the 15 milligram per liter.
Okay, milligrams.
They've installed pretreatment. So with the new limit going to 100, they'll be able to adjust their pretreatment process, and it'll actually save them money, I'm guessing, to be able to go somewhere between 0 and 100 and run their pretreatment a little less. They should, I mean, those industries that currently have the pretreatment should never, because they're meeting it, they're meeting the 15 now, so I don't see any reason why they wouldn't meet the 400 as a maximum. If they choose to shut off their pretreatment and start paying the surcharge, that's something that they'll have to evaluate and see what makes sense to them. But we'll find out, you know, once this ordinance, you know, if you guys approve it, what happens from there. And then it sets it up, you know, Brewster Creek is doing very well, and there's a food industry out there. We hope more come, and we'll be set up to deal with that.
And they all have currently, they currently all have pretreatment facilities yet?
The ones, yes, the ones that currently are there have pretreatment.
Well, they also have the option at that point in time of upgrading their pretreatment also.
Right. Yeah, they would have to do their internal to find out what it costs them versus paying the surcharge.
Well, you're very comfortable with these limits that we're setting?
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions. I know that, I know Rana invested in a very, very expensive piece of pretreatment equipment when they built, right?
Based on the 15 milligrams per liter they had to meet, yes.
Yeah, and so, we, did we require them to buy that piece of equipment because we did not have something like this? Like this ordinance?
Right, our limit was 15, so they had to meet the 15. So they had to figure out, pretreatment wise, what they needed to do based on what they're producing and achieve the 15 milligrams per liter. One thing that this will do for Rana is, as we hope they expand, as they are right now with their offices and that, hopefully, they'll continue to expand their production side. This will give them flexibility on their existing pretreatment and any future pretreatment that they may need.
So on the flip side of that, does this loosen up our requirements for them to install pretreatment equipment if a new food producer comes out there? So, because right now, we're requiring them to put this in. And I remember the meetings that we had.
Right.
It was like, okay.
Well, we're requiring it to hit the 15 milligrams per liter.
And if they don't, I understand they're going to have to pay more for the surcharge.
So now it'll be 100. So Rana, if, let's say Rana came in, right, you know, assuming this ordinance were to be approved, if the limit was 100, then Rana's pretreatment might be different, or it might be the same thing, but they can kind of tweak how they operate that facility to meet 100 rather than the 15.
So what they're doing now, they can actually loosen it up and let more junk come through our system?
Right. And we've evaluated that our plant will not have issues treating it and, you know, meeting all of our EPA permit requirements.
So it makes me a little bit concerned when, like, 100 to 400 seems like a big gap. I mean, is it a progressive surcharge? Like, the higher you get, like 100 to 200 would be X, and if you go, because if you just put a flat fee on it, they're going to be pushing it at $399 all the time. You know?
That, we actually had that discussion. But we're comfortable, even if they were to go to the 400, they're going to, and that's why we kind of set that dollar amount. It's basically a poundage, how many pounds of FOG they're sending to us, and it'll get pricey for them to do that, but that's something that they'll look at. If they choose to do that, we're still confident that we can treat it and not have issues. We actually can, you know, there's buffers in there. We actually can treat more than that, but we had to set the limit somewhere where, because there starts to get a point where it can start to follow up our sewer system or our lift station.
Yeah, and that's our concern, I think the village's concern, is, I think it would be something we might want to discuss is, okay, from 100 to 200 or 250, it's X. You start jumping over that, it's going to be even more expensive, and then that would actually, I would guess anyway, would make them think twice about not putting in their own equipment and...
Well, they, they'll still have to put in pretreatment equipment. And frankly, Rana struggled to meet our requirements, and we plugged the system, and they spent a lot more than the surcharge in having it shipped out, you know, some of the product as they were introducing new lines. So they were tweaking it, you know, they had some issues with respect to that, where we kind of had to ride her, and they were well above the 15. And we were, this ordinance also provides for some remedies if they exceed it and that weren't in the old ordinance. So that was where I was coming from in this draft, is it was important that we have these regulations so that there's some leeway for them. And we took that into account in the numbers and looked at surcharges in other towns, and they looked at that 100 versus 400 just on the FOG, but there's the other categories as well.
Well, the way that our system is set up right now, the ordinance that we have right now, obviously, is not scaring any food producers off. So my biggest concern here with something like this is we loosen it up too much, and then we have a mess on our hands, right?
Right, right.
That's my biggest concern, is making sure that we're not saying, okay, just, you know, because I just think that you'll probably wind up at 390, and all of it will be coming through, it'll overwhelm our system, and let's say, whoa, now we got to go back and go back to the well and change our pricing or something. I don't know.
Based on, that's why we had Trotter do that sampling and evaluation down at our treatment plant. We're comfortable, even if, you know, if everybody decided to do that, we could always change it, so that's one option. We don't know what will happen.
Businesses don't like change. Yeah. I mean, they would prefer paying the money for the fine, is what I'm told. You know, just fine me. Don't make me change my operation, just fine me.
It's hard to do with...
That was taken into consideration in sizing these limits.
It just seems like from 15 to 100 is a heck of a jump.
It is.
And I'm assuming, so we're comfortable that we have the capacity to handle it if everybody goes full throttle at 100, but I'm assuming also that our costs are going to increase because we're going to have to haul that stuff away from the waste treatment facility.
That's what the surcharge is.
Wearing the machines.
That's where the surcharge is built at.
Well, but that's if, but the surcharge applies if they're above 100.
Right.
But if somebody's at 99 and we start hauling more sludge.
We won't have to do that at 99.
Our treatment plant will actually process it. It utilizes in the process, so we don't have any, 15 was low. The 100, we feel very comfortable that there will not be any added cost to us to be able to, from 15 to 100. The 100 to 400, we're capturing that surcharge. If we find that we start to run into issues, that surcharge dollar could be raised at a later date, and that would discourage them from going between the 100 to the 400 and try to get them pushed back down to the 100. But seeing that we've only got a couple of current customers, we don't anticipate having, you know, any issues at all right now, but as we get more, I mean, those are the things that we'll be evaluating and determining if we're our, you know, are they all going at the 399? at the 399 or are they going at the 99? And we'll, time will tell where that ends up.
Okay. Hopefully, we won't.
Dan, these changes weren't necessarily brought on by the request of these businesses and Bartlett coming to you and saying, "We want change." No.
Well, Rana was before I was here, but based on discussions with Bob and then I know at that time, it was a big discussion, the 15 limit.
And ours was so low because we didn't have the kind of industrial businesses in town that would need it. And so, we're kind of catching up now. The Brewster Creek has come in, we have, these businesses can use it, and now we think we're setting it appropriate.
But I guess my, just a final comment and it might be the business side and me coming out. If we attracted all these food companies and we didn't have all the hassle of all of the cleanup, it seems backwards to change it now, to change it so pushing more of the burden on the village to manage the cleanup on some of this. Instead of treating, instead of going on at 15 parts, even 50 parts, whatever it might be, we're kind of opening up and saying, "Okay, now we're going to take on more of the hassle of treatment," whereas we weren't having to do that before. Are we gonna attract new people possibly? Are we going to, I mean, I don't know that we can get any other type of manufacturers out there. I just, I guess I'm a little confused as to why we would...
Well, and I think similarly, are we going to regularly review where we're at? Because I don't think you want too many users coming in at the 100 and then we say, "Oh, by the way, we've had a lot of buildout, we've gotta come down to 80." So, then, everybody's gonna be mad because they're gonna have to retrofit. So, is this something we're gonna check out every couple of years to evaluate or...
Well, part of their pretreatment permit will require them to do sampling weekly, so we'll be seeing what they're actually, Rana and Cheese Merchant right now are turning in samples whenever they're discharging. They give us samples of where they're at. So, that will continue. So, we'll know right away where people are going.
And let me just make a comment. We talk about putting the burden on the village. We don't have to haul this away. This will be treated like the rest of the sewers that we have. And we have always, when we try to attract people to Brewster Creek or the other industrial area, talked about our capacity. So, it is well within our capacity to do that.
Okay, right.
All right, any other questions? I think this was just for discussion this evening. Are we moving this on to somewhere else or...
Does it go onto board?
On to the board for a vote.
Onto the board for a vote then, okay.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman Hammer. This concludes our meeting this evening. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
By Trustee Danny, second by Trustee Hopkins. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Aaronz?
Yes.
Hammer?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
We are adjourned.